Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
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 Good morning, everyone. I'll have my camera off just for a minute. I'm driving back home after dropping my son off at camp. But I can hear and see your screen.
See you at soccer camp by chance?
No, he's at Parks and Rec.
Oh, okay. I was just curious because we had one of ours go down to soccer camp down there just west of Liberty Memorial. So I was wondering, same place?
Well, I wish I would have known because he usually plays with kids from his school and all like the soccer.
Yeah.
And they canceled. The spring is lucky enough to find Parks and Rec willing to have camp.
Gotcha. So it's nine o'clock. Do we have everybody on Joe by chance?
See, I was muted. We have. Yes, we do have everyone. Sarah is supposed to be joining us too, and Diane Binkley, our deputy director, is also on.
I see Diane on the call with us. Good morning. Let's see. So should we wait for a second for Sarah to show up or can we start without her?
I think we can start without her.
Okay, let's do that because I do have a hard stop at 10 o'clock today for another meeting I need to be at. So let's go ahead and get started. So this is the City Planning Commission work session here on the 23rd, and it's more of a training learning process for the commissioners. And so hopefully there's people on that's going to learn with us. But Joe, please take it away. You went back to mute again, Joe.
When I share. Geez, when I share my screen, all the tools make it, they don't disappear, but it's just hard to see everything. So let me go back to sharing my screen. Okay, so we've heard several kind of lines of questioning that I really think could be answered or best discussed when we go through our development process overview, which we touched on in the orientation, but we could dive into it for today. And then the second issue that we wanted to discuss is there's been a number of questions about our rules and regulations. So I've asked Sarah to kind of go over the high level view of what the rules and regs state. And then I know there's a lot of interest in some stormwater questions. We really need some Water Services Department staff to participate in that. So if there continues to be interest, we can certainly set a later work session date to go over that. And then if there's time at the end of today, and there's other topics we didn't touch on that you guys want to talk about, we can talk about that very end of the meeting and potentially have an additional work session to go over those topics. Can y'all see a PowerPoint on your screen? Yes?
Yeah, I can.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a PowerPoint that I think Diane and I, we put together, but we've borrowed some pieces that we've used before.
Actually, it still has your work session agenda on there. So it hasn't switched over to the PowerPoint yet.
Thank you.
There you go.
So this is a PowerPoint that Diane and I have put together that kind of talks about the overall development process and what it is that department broadly speaking and the division, our division specifically engages in from when a project's first conceived all the way to when it's completed. So hopefully it'll give you all what we hope it does at the end of this discussion is gives you an idea of where your role falls into the larger process of development in Kansas City. And we think it would answer probably a lot of the questions you've expressed in the past. Diane's gonna, Diane and I are gonna tag team this and she's gonna take on the slides. Diane, do you want to go ahead and describe this part of the process?
Sure. Thanks, Joe. So good morning, everyone. As Joe said, I'm Diane Binkley. I'm the deputy director for the department. I know you've met Mr. Williams. So he and I office right next door to each other, and I'm kind of his right-hand person, if you will. And I'm actually formerly the division manager for development management. So the role that Joe plays, I used to play before I became the deputy. So I have a pretty good knowledge and understanding of everything that happens in that division and probably whether Joe likes it or not, I probably stick my nose in it a little more than than he might like. But anyway. So with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about the development process. We're going to kind of start a little higher and then we'll kind of dig into some of these pieces more. Hopefully now that you've seen a few cases and you've been through what appear to be some pretty long Plan Commission meetings, and some of this will start to now make a little bit more sense from what you originally saw. So the development process, when someone comes in and talks with us, there's two different paths it can go. And you can go to the as-of-right development. And so those are typically smaller projects. So for instance, something that's less than a building that is less than 8,000 square feet, you can go directly in and go to the Plans Review Division of our department. And with that, they review chapter 88 as they look at the building code as well. But that process, they, those buildings won't come to you. So if you see a suddenly a small building pop up somewhere and you think, gosh, I never saw that, that's why. So it still gets reviewed under the code, but it's just that you won't see those. Or if it's say, a residential structure that is less than 20 units, you won't see those either. They'll go directly to the plans review and they'll review it along with the chapter 18 building code, which by the way, we just adopted the 2018 international building codes just last week, I think it was. So anyway. So then with that, land development will also review it. It'll go through permits, inspections, and so on. It just goes on down the road. And so if it is larger than 8,000 square feet or or more than 20 units, or it's multiple principal structures, so multiple buildings on one lot, or certain amount of acreage, there's a whole list of things that's in the 500 series of the code, then that comes to you. And that's when you'll suddenly see things, and that's a lot of what you've already seen recently. Or also it can be if it's something related to zoning and the like. So we'll go more into that later. So with that, once it gets into the development process, then the land development division, development management, Joe's group, long-range planning, all the other departments will review this. And again, we'll talk more about that. And then after it gets through the public process, it'll still go to plan review, permits and inspections, just like those other projects did. So Joe, let's go on. Maybe I'll talk a little bit about that pre. So some of the things that have been developed here at the city that I think are a little unique to Kansas City is, for instance, a development assistance team. So if a developer has a grand idea and they want to talk to the city, but they're not quite ready to apply, they can contact us and set up what we call a development assistance team meeting. That meeting, it's a free service that we offer. All the different departments of the city come together and they review what the proposal is. So a lot of times, I mean, these typically aren't engineered projects yet. Maybe they normally have some level of architecture to it and a general site plan layout. This, this affords the developer the opportunity to understand what the process is going to be for what they're proposing. They can see if there's any big hiccups that they, that the city sees. And also it helps them to kind of identify what sort of costs may end up being associated with this project and kind of gets them hopefully on their, on the right path to move forward. So that does not though stand for a pre-application meeting. Pre-application meetings are required by code for a lot of different types of projects. And so that development assistance team, that's an early on meeting and then, but if someone decides to move forward with that project or any other, then they can come, then they need to come in for a pre-application meeting. And that meeting is typically with Joe's staff, and sometimes it can be with others, kind of depending on what they tell us and what other information we have. Then following that, then they submit their application whenever they're ready to come in to see you all. And so the difference between like going and getting a permit or going into some of the other parts of our department, there are actually application deadlines, which are noon on Fridays. And it's typically every other Friday because we run a two-week, or you know, every two-week process, you all see us. And so you can imagine that 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 process, it gets in a cycle and there's a timeframe that we set. So once they make that application, they can, then we do a QCR that afternoon, again afternoon, that's why it's a noon dead stop. And if they pass the QCR, then they are in process and they will, assuming they can meet all the other things, but we do guarantee that they will then get to you within it's five and a half weeks that they will show up on your docket. So if they don't pass QCR because they don't meet the minimums as set out by ordinance, then we notify them that they did not set, that they did not meet it. And then they have to go back and reapply or fix their application and resubmit. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm Diane. Can I ask a question here?
Sure. Now remember, you have one hour, so we got to move.
Okay, just a quick question. So after this meeting, does the developer get like a summary of what's kind of talked about and some things that they should look at as part of their development project?
Yes, under the, from the DAT meeting, yes, we'll provide a summary at the end. And and then they know everyone who was at the meeting so that they have contact information and a summary of what was talked about. Thank you. Joe, I think, were you going to take it from here for a minute?
Yeah, I can. So what we want to dive into now is the part of the process at the bottom of the screen of this flow chart here. So again, these are projects that require some sort of zoning approval that come through planning commission. And I want to give you a bit more detail about how that part of the process works. So when the applications first filed, you know, Diane mentioned there's a deadline, application deadline last Friday, for example, was an application deadline. The deadline's at noon on that, on that Friday, and staff actually starts quality control review at 1:00 PM on the same day. We complete it on the same day as well. So the customer knows by the end of the day on Friday whether or not they failed or passed quality control review. If they pass, we invoice them and they have a few days to pay their application fee. Once we receive that, we start the work that's shown here on this slide. If they fail, they have an opportunity to resubmit and correct or make whatever modifications they need to make. Within, if they do it within three business days, they're still on the same schedule. So the people that lose time are the ones that aren't, for whatever reason, able to respond within three business days on a failed QCR. So what we do once it passes QCR is we do a lot of administrative tasks. We do a lot of things in Compass. Our side of Compass is called Intergov. So sometimes staff interchangeably refers to Compass and Intergov. And to us, it's kind of the same thing. Compass is just the public facing side of it. But we really push all that information that we get from the applicant out to Compass so that the public can see it since our process is a public process. We are writing our legal notices and advertisements for all the public hearing information. And that's because that has to be done by a certain date by law. So that's one of the things that kind of keeps coming up is why do we have to continue some of the cases? It is partly because we have to advertise about three weeks before the hearing. And at that point, we typically don't always know if a case is ready to go forward to city council or city planning commission or not. We're also distributing the plans, all the departments and divisions who need to review it. And I think I've mentioned before, we have 38 different reviewing agencies. Some are external, most are internal to the city. And most of those, of those 38, approximately half participate face-to-face in a development review committee meeting, which will be a bit.
Hi, Joe. What's an application fee? Does it depend on how big the development is or is it just a flat fee?
It's a flat fee for some application types, like project plans and MPD final plans are usually around 270 bucks. They're pretty low. But development plans or rezonings to your and MPD can be as high as like $3,500. But it's a, it's a formula based upon the number of acres or number of residential units that are proposed. So in the course, between week one and week three, we've, staff is reviewing everything. We've sent everything out to the various reviewers that are necessary for that application type. They're reviewing it. They are communicating with each other and with the project planner. Keep in mind that at this time, the project planner, which is my staff, planners on my staff, they're probably presenting to you, writing the staff report or preparing to present or presenting to you on a, on a cycle that's like four cycles ahead of this. So their, their kind of, their emphasis is on preparing for you all and the staff report for your, your meeting. That's our priority. But they're also reviewing applications that just came in a week or two before that hearing date that you will see in about a month and a half. So that's kind of the cycle. There's a lot of overlapping deadlines there. So what we do at Development Review Committee is we physically meet, right now we're doing it virtually, of course, where we meet with the various departments and agencies and we discuss the project. That's helpful for the reviewers sometimes because the planner knows the project typically a bit better than our reviewers do because we've had a pre-application meeting or we've already talked with the applicant about it in greater detail. So we try to describe the project and we just discuss, what do we think are the big issues here? What is the, what is your department's policies and wire, what's relevant to, you know, in terms of your comments to this project versus perhaps irrelevant policies and procedures that should not apply to the project. We kind of go through that together. When we're done with that meeting, we, two day, within two days, we sent, two business days, we sent out written comments to the applicant that are a summary of every department, division's comments. And these typically form the basis of the planned corrections and conditions that you see in the staff report. So the applicant is getting this because planning commission is typically six weeks after the application deadline. They're first seeing those corrections and conditions three weeks before you. So it does beg the question of when the applicant is asking at that time for changes to conditions and corrections, why they didn't ask for them. Is, is sometimes staff is caught off guard because they didn't raise the issue to us. We weren't aware there was even a concern. So that's something to keep in mind. They do have the opportunity, the letter that we send out, it gives them the opportunity to revise their fraud, their plans in response to our comments. It is not required. They're not required to revise it before planning commission, but they are allowed to. And they're allowed to do it and still keep on schedule, give them deadlines for that. Also, sometimes the project is just lacking some detail or perhaps it's just complex or controversial enough that we need to have a face-to-face meeting with the applicant. So we do have something we call applicant DRC, which would be two weeks later. So it'd be on the fifth week. It's usually right before the staff reports are due for planning commission, where we would meet with the applicant and decide, you know, discuss, hash out some of the issues or the questions they have with the staff comments. Sometimes we determine it either of these meetings, whether it's an applicant DRC or just the staff DRC, that the project might need to be continued, just there are too many questions. Once all the reviewers are together, we're asking too many questions. And so for that reason, we might decide to continue the case or recommend. So here's just a visual that kind of shows kind of what the, how the process lays out. So what we have here on the left, of course, is the QCR that we already discussed, and the little arrow just means that that can cycle over and over again. Until they pass QCR, we don't move forward with the docket case. And so once we dock in a case, that's just an action, the administrative stuff, like I described a couple of slides ago, starts to happen, staff review starts. And then we have DRC Development Review Committee. And again, that can cycle too. It's less common for that to cycle. Typically, we are able to move through DRC with and provide good comments and keep it going. But sometimes it does have to come back to DRC as either an applicant DRC or sometimes it comes back multiple times to the staff level, DRC, just because the applicant does want to respond and revise plans. And perhaps they revise them substantially. And in that case, we make the call whether or not it needs to be reviewed by DRC again. But once it's passed out of that, it comes to you all. And typically that's within six weeks. And of course, you all can continue the case that you often have or asked to do. And so that's why it shows that. And then once you make a, take action on a project to approve or deny, it would go on to the final decision-making body. Sometimes you are the final decision-making body on project plans and MPD final plans. You are the decision-making authority. But in most cases, it goes on to the Board of Zoning Adjustment or City Council. Diane, was I going through this stuff too? I think, I think I was probably. So this is the kind of the public hearing process, and I realize it's a bit confusing because some of these terms, interchangeably, but we have at the very top, the top bullet point is the public is in reference to the Public Engagement Ordinance. That's what section 88 505 12 is. And that was just passed last summer, and it requires the applicant to meet with all property owners within 300 feet or to, to host a neighborhood meeting and invite all property owners within 300 feet as well as any neighborhood association that is, that the subject property lies with them. So sometimes there are, there are actually neighborhood associations that can overlap. So there are times where there are properties that fall within two or even three neighborhood associations. If that's the case, the applicant has the, is what they're supposed to do is first work with the neighborhood association to determine. You know, some of our neighborhoods are very active and have regular meetings, and some of them are very inactive. So the purpose of the ordinance is to require them to reach out first to the neighborhood association to see if the neighborhood association wants to host a meeting or if they want the applicant to. Because sometimes the neighborhoods have the resources, they know who to invite. They know their neighborhood's best, and sometimes they're just inactive and they just prefer that the, that the applicant hosts it. But it requires that dialogue upfront, and then they establish the meeting date and time, and then they send out invitations. And all of that has to occur within no later than 17 days prior to planning commission. They have to send out the invitations at least 10 days prior to their meeting. And their meeting has to occur at least seven days prior to planning commission. So staff is checking to make sure that happens. They have to copy us whenever they send that information out. If we don't receive it, this ordinance does allow us to continue the case at the staff level. And so we do do that. We would never docket it, basically. So sometimes what you see is the applicant, you see a few, every now and then us recommending continuance of a case on the docket because they didn't meet this requirement. And that might be because they sent out the invitations on time, but then for whatever reason, the meeting didn't happen or had to be rescheduled. And so initially they met the deadline, something happened with the meeting and they needed to cancel it or reschedule it. And that's happened a bit more since March because of people, because of the virus. Then we also do as staff, we send out public hearing notices, which are required to do by law. We publish them in the legal record. Not very many people read that, but that's what we're required to publish them in. And then we also post, post a sign on the property. We actually make signs and give them to the applicant and they post signs on the property. That actually can be, that requirement can be waived by the planning commission. And we have been documenting in all of our staff reports since March that we're not put, we're not able to give people signs. That will change soon once we're back in the office more regularly, but since we're not in the office, we're not able to give customers signs. However, we also do the mailed notice to all property owners, same list of owners and neighborhood associations has received the invitation to the neighborhood.
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So does this timeframe still apply when we reschedule it because of no contact with the public engagement piece?
What do you mean by the timeframe? The?
You just went over the number of days required to send out a notice and have a meeting. And I'm saying, does that same timeframe apply when it's been continued because that hasn't been done?
So they're only have to hold the meeting once, whether the commission continues it or not. So if they've, if, if you, if we're continuing the case because they haven't held the meeting yet, yes, then they still have to follow the ordinance and meet all those timeframes requirement. Timeframes required by the ordinance. If they've already met that and you're continuing it for some other reason, then they don't need to have another meeting unless you direct them to. But so then those timeframes wouldn't apply if they've already met it. Um, so then of course.
I just got a question, just on what we're getting. Sometimes we just get names. Sometimes we get minutes of meetings. So they're not required to do a minute of meeting under the 88 505. They're just required just to list names of people to attend?
Yeah, there, that was debated quite a lot when the ordinance was drafted. People in the development community, which is kind of a general term I use for lawyers, design professionals, developers themselves that were involved, and we also involve neighborhoods as well. People that were involved at that time did raise a good point about how if they were to provide a meeting summary, it could be interpreted by, for instance, the neighborhood might say, well, that summary is misrepresentative of what actually happened. And so there, and the neighborhood kind of agreed, neighborhood folks we talked to kind of agreed with that. They would then want to provide their own neighborhood summary and there'd be dueling summaries. So we wanted to avoid that whole situation. The point of the engagement was not to require the two sides to agree to anything. It was more just to share for the applicant to say, hey, here's what we plan to do. We're interested in your feedback and for them to start a dialogue. It was not to establish some sort of agreement or anything like that. So what the ordinance landed on was just a signup sheet so that we could, so that we understood who attended essentially. And so you should be, I do know that there's been a couple of times that the planners have forgotten to attach those to their reports. But I have asked them to do that. So you should always have, if the staff report on the front page says that public engagement is required, you should always have attached to the staff report a signup sheet. So that you can see if someone's testifying that they were actually involved in that meeting as well. So the rest of this slide is really talking about the public hearing process. Of course, you all hold a public hearing. And then if a case goes on to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they do as well. And if it goes on to city council as well. So you're never, whenever you're in a position of making a recommendation, you're never the final public. Yeah, the citizens and the applicant will always have another opportunity to testify and present their case to the decision-making body, whoever that is. After the BZA or city council or in some cases, after you all make a final decision, staff prepares and sends what are called disposition letters. And essentially what that is, is it's a letter that says on, you know, second, the City Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of your case, or in the case of a project plan, voted to approve your case subject to the following conditions. And we list out all the conditions and corrections that you all either recommended or approved. And we provide that to the customer so that it's, and we keep it in our file as part of the record. That's what documents what you've done in addition to the minutes, of course. The applicants are then able to move forward into the, in the process and apply for building permits. Sometimes they do apply for building permits in advance of approval. There are some things they can get approval of prior to, in terms of permitting, prior to final zoning approval. But generally, they cannot start building structures until there's approval. My staff will be, you know, if it's Zach's case, for example, that he brought through planning commission, through city council, BZA, he would then end up being also the planner that reviews. Because he's most familiar with the project. So you've seen, I think, most of the different types of applications that so far that that come through planning commission. I think you've seen, you've definitely seen some rezonings. We have three types of rezoning. We have open zoning. You are. Um, we have three types of rezoning. We have open zoning. Um, you are an NPD. And all open means is that it's a zoning without a plan. Um, and and sometimes to be very clear, you'll see a companion case. You'll see a rezoning, for example, if they had a B two, commercial zoning, and then also a development plan on the same property in their companion cases. Um, those are still, we would consider them an open zoning because the zoning and the plan aren't necessarily tied together. They're not one in the same. Whereas with the UR and NPD, they are tied together. So what that means is that um in a case of a UR and NPD, the plan itself is the zoning of the property. So anytime someone says, is this use allowed or can I build this or can I expand that building? We're always going to be looking at the UR approved plan or the NPD approved plan to see what it says. And if it allows it, allows it. If it doesn't, it doesn't. Um, so you see a lot of plan amendments to URs and MPDs um in order to change the allowed uses or to allow um changes to the plan itself. You've also seen some area plan amendments. Those are typically, um, it is possible occasionally, probably once a year on average or maybe twice a year, you'll see an area plan amendment where we're actually changing the area plan. The city is initiating that application. Um, because that is kind of the cycle that long range planning is on, is a couple of plans a year get amended. Um, and as, as Kyle previously mentioned, we have eighteen different area plans um throughout the city. Um, but most commonly you see the area plan amendment application in association with a rezoning. The practice and the policy of the city is that if, if the area, if a zoning request does not conform with the land use recommendation in the area plan. And to be very clear, there's a ton of other recommendations of the area plans. But we're talking specifically about the land use recommendation. If the zoning does not, zoning request does not comply with that, then the area plan amendment must, area plan must be amended to reflect the proposed zoning, if the proposed zoning is approved. So um, we try to avoid that as much as we can, but that's an obligation that we have. We have to amend the area plan when it doesn't. Um, you also see a lot of development plans. These are basically, development plans are going to be big, larger scale projects. Uh, Diane referenced earlier their criteria that are set forth in the code. Basically, any building that's larger than thirty thousand square feet, if there's two or more buildings on a lot. If there's more than forty dwelling units, um, and even in an industrial case of the size of a lot is more than five acres. Um, then usually a development plan is required. So it's helpful to think of a development plan as like a large scale site plan approval and a project plan is a smaller scale. Particularly more site specific, um, where a project or where the proposal falls under those criteria um that I just referenced. Um, you also see preliminary and final plats. Um, those are fairly self-explanatory, except that preliminary is um really more like laying out of a neighborhood, whereas final plat is usually done in phases on the near end. Um, there's a bit more typically, there's a bit more scrutiny of a preliminary plat than a final plat because um, the final plat has to conform to the preliminary plat. And if it does, you have to approve it. Whereas the preliminary preliminary plat, we're evaluating to make sure it complies with all the subdivision standards in the code. And if it doesn't comply, then they can request waivers for those and you have the right to um right, make a recommendation on those waivers and ultimately the council would have to.
I I just got a, from the NPD or UR, if we change the zoning, do they then come back to the CPC for the preliminary and final plat approval? Is there?
Often URs and MPDs are, and and development plans for that matter, they are often also a preliminary plat. So we, our code does not require people to file a separate application for preliminary plat if they're also requesting a development plan or UR NPD. So often you'll see that UR NPD preliminary plans and development plans are also a preliminary plat. And then they will be required, yes, to come back later with a final plat for each of those phases. And you'll see those. And in the case of UR NPD, they also are required to do a final plan later in addition to the final plat. Um, the UR final plan is administrative. Staff reviews that and approves it. The NPD final plan does come back to the planning commission. For your approval. You also have special use permits, which we have talked about um a bit more um during the hearings and you have quite a few of those. You usually see at least a couple per docket. Um, project plans, I already kind of described. Final plans are only for district and or for, that you see at least are only for district NPD. NPD plans. We do have vacations of right of way and of plats, and I don't believe you've seen one yet. Um, they're not that common, but um any right of way for a street, we have a lot of what we call paper streets in Kansas City, which it means that they were platted to be streets that especially was either ever built or was abandoned and it's overgrown and not used. Um, so oftentimes adjacent property owners end up maintaining it or want to maintain it. They want to use it as part of their yard. Um, and so they may request they vacating that right of way. There are criteria in the code um that weren't in there until about four years ago, I think, Diane, when one of our planners did a text amendment to add criteria to the code. Um, to give you all some, something to, to, you know, to make a decision against, um, so that it's not an arbitrary decision. Um, and that is something I think you'll see a vacation of right of way coming up pretty soon. Vacation of plats is the same type of thing. If a plat was, we have a fair, quite a few areas of the city that were platted and never developed. Um. So if someone wanted to vacate that plat and get, that would essentially mean getting rid of the plat. Um, that, that would come through you as well. The vacation of plat is much less common than right of way though.
Joe, we also. A little bit on the vacation of right of way. Through that process, um, all utility companies, anybody who might have any sort of utility or structure within the right of way, all, they are all notified and they provide comments back to us. So a lot of times if we do vacate right of way, there'll still be an easement for those utilities. So all of that is handled before it ever gets to you. Um, you'll see those comments in the staff report again, but there's a lot of background review that has to occur. Plus also, if you, we will not allow for a vacation of right of way to create a dead end street anymore. So it could be, even though someone wants to vacate just a portion, we don't allow that. It has to be the full continuation. And therefore they also have to get seventy-five percent of property owners adjacent to that right of way to agree to the vacation. So again, there's a lot of work that goes into it before it gets to you. And I think, Joe, if I'm um, remember correctly, Zach is the primary person. That because there's so much detail to it, having one planner who's really um knowledgeable in it is, is important.
Yep. We also have, I'm going to skip over admin approvals. We also have variances and special exceptions. Um, these never come to you. Um, we just listed them because we thought it'd be important for you to understand what the scope of staff's job is, which goes beyond planning commission. So both administrative approvals and variances and special exceptions are things that we work on. And we have a pretty high volume of administrative approvals. All the short term rentals in the city, for example, have to be registered and a fair number of them also have to have some sort of staff um additional administrative approval in addition to the registration. And it's our staff that does that. Um, you are final plans. Um, we have a lot of amendments to plans after they're approved. Um, so it could be that, um, you know, after council approves um a development plan, for example. And the developer is getting ready to pull building permits and they've realized that, you know, they need to expand the building uh by two thousand square feet or something like that. Depending on the size of the building that you approved, they can do that administratively. They can expand a building by up to ten percent beyond what's approved. Um, and we would be reviewing those. Um, I think last year we had like almost two hundred administrative approval cases. Um, and then variances and special exceptions. Um, those go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. You never see them. Um, but anytime someone wants to deviate in some way from a zoning ordinance requirement. Um, in most cases, they need to get a variance from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Special exceptions are for fences only. Um, and those are actually surprisingly common. It's if someone wants to build a fence over, over the height allowed by code or in a, in a yard, like in their front yard, um, then they may need a special exception. Um, the last thing I want to talk about is tax incentive plans. I don't think you've seen one yet. Um, but um, they're not uncommon. And really, um, it's important to understand the scope of tax incentive plans. So what this is, is like um, Plan Industrial Expansion Authority um, is probably the more common of, of the various types of tax incentive plans. What they have to prepare is a blight analysis and then also a general development plan. And that, those two things come together to you as one application that we call a tax. Um, staff reviews the general development plan that they've put together to make sure it conforms to city policy, particularly the long range plan. And that's our feedback that we provide to you. We, we do evaluate it against the area plan and the long range plans to make sure it, it conforms. Um, I can't think of a time that they didn't conform. They typically actually copy and paste the plan into their taxes. That they typically take the relevant pages from the area plan and put it right in there. Um, but if it didn't conform, that would definitely be an area where we would weigh in and we would of course want to weigh in. Um, in terms of the blight analysis, staff does not, we don't have possessed skills um to get into the weeds on that. So we do not make a recommendation on blight, whether property is blighted or anything like that. But you all do have to, you all have to look at what um the law says about blight, which there's typically um, in addition to a P I E A staff person, there's typically a um expert in the area of, of what the law says about blight and conducted the blight analysis that will also present that information to you. Um, so that you have that background information. Um, but you will be asked to make those determinations um sometimes. Um, ultimately it goes on to the city council for them to make the final decision on all that stuff, but you do make a recommendation on both the general development plan and the finding of blight.
Joe, Bruce Linder again. How does that work with the TIF Commission and so forth? We're approving. You know, they may, they may apply for the TIF. So what's the interaction there?
So, so each of those commissions have their own each of those commissions have their own staff. Um, they're not city staff. And what they do is they make, they do the same type of work we do. They evaluate all the details and they make recommendations to those commissions. Um, and typically like for you, to use your example, TIF Commission, what would happen is that the commission itself would make their own determination first. And then it would come, then they would file the application with the city. Um, and then it would come to you. So by the time you see it, it's usually been vetted by that particular commission and they've made a recommend or a decision on whether they think it's blighted and whether ultimately it's uh up to the city council.
So.
Decide everything.
So when, so we don't run concurrently with most of these incentive groups. They get the incentive approved first or rec- recommended or not recommended first. It comes through us and then city council makes a decision based on all those factors.
Yeah, that's right. And I mean, if city council theoretically were to turn something down, then it doesn't really matter what. I, I'm kind of getting beyond my knowledge. So I look for Diane and Sarah to maybe jump in if they know. But I think if the city council turns something down, it doesn't matter with the TIF.
Yeah, I, I guess the, I mean, I know that that's not our scope of work, her scope. Um, but it is good to, I think for us to kind of understand that process because, I mean, it's hard to make, it's hard to make a decision in a vacuum. Um, and obviously we're not deciding on incentives, but um. It's kind of part, I don't know, it seems like it's part of the, the, the case, right? Um, for it, uh, in a way. And I don't know, sometimes we, it, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily come up in the, in the process. And so that's what I've gotten questions from people about is like, why do you, and I've tried to explain to them, we don't make decisions on incentives. We make decisions based on the zoning and things of that nature, but so it's good to know how it flows. Um, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's always coming to you after it's been, it's not been, nothing's been decided necessarily, but by whatever the agency is um that they're seeking incentives under. That the developer is seeking incentives under. And that agency has their own staff and they'll appear before you all to answer the questions you have. Um, but it would have done that first and then come to you. And sometimes you see tax incentive plans and a UR rezoning case simultaneously. That's desirable because then you kind of know what incentives are requesting versus what the project is at the same time. But you, but that's not required either. Sometimes the tax incentive plan comes first and then six months later the UR zoning comes. You can't have a UR zoning or the tax incentive plan.
Okay, just maybe to make sure I understand, either way, we, we definitely have a say in any UR development plan that comes forward as to whether blight is valid. Because at some point we're going to, even if it's not with the UR approval, with the blight study that in tax incentive plan that might come before concurrently, we do have the ability to say that, no, this is inflated. And ultimately if I went to city council, then the incentives wouldn't um happen either. So in some ways we have an indirect uh response to incentives. I just want to make sure I understand that.
Yeah, and you have the opportunity to ask questions about that, you know. You have the opportunity to ask the staff from the, whatever agency it is um, to say, you know, what is, what kind do they want on one hundred percent abatement for twenty-five years or is there a variation to it? Um, you have the opportunity to ask those questions.
So are they required to show up to our meeting to present um for projects that received debate man? Cause I, I don't think we got, there wasn't a staff member for the one office swope with community builders.
And I know that was a UR, so that was a UR zoning request.
Okay.
So, so, so first of all, we have a lot of areas of the city that have already been determined to be blighted. I mean, a vast area of the city.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That have, that have already been determined to be blighted and already have a tax, a tax incentive plan on it. So you will see a fair number of UR rezoning cases without a tax incentive plan. And, and if that's the case, it's because it's in an area that's already been determined to be blighted and has a tax incentive.
Okay, so.
Sometimes you will see them together because they're seeking a new type of incentive or perhaps it's an area that's not determined yet.
So like, for example, if the intercontinental tries to declare themselves blighted, that would probably come through here.
It depends on the type of incentive they're trying to use.
Yeah, of course. Okay, cool.
Yep.
Right. So just to tag on to what Joe was just saying. So as an example, so you, you will see TIF, you will see um urban renewal. So don't get that confused with urban redevelopment, the, you know, UR zoning, urban renewal plans. Um, are another group that you'll see, you'll see LCRA, um, Land Clearance for Redevelopment Authority. You will not see Port Authority. And Port Authority right now is a group that's really offering a lot of incentives and that does not come to you. And the, it, we do not require it to rezone to UR. Typically they're big enough projects to where you're still seeing a development plan or something, but it's not required to rezone to UR. The, the code just doesn't support it. We've talked about adjusting it, but it isn't that way right now. Joe, is there any other ones that go through? There's some other like, um, oh different types of um like chapter one hundreds and some of those others also that we do not, are rezoned.
And there's like, there's like, there's all sorts, I mean, um, CIDs are not really the exact same thing, but they do, in the public discourse, they tend to be lumped together. And those you don't see anything on, um, just the council does. Um, there's nothing in the, in the code that requires them to get some sort of approval through planning commission plan approval. But to Diane's point, there, and there's like some tax redirection stuff that's way not light, lives totally outside the code. Um, and if people are seeking that, um, the only time you would see a project that's seeking that, this is, those types of incentives is if they're triggering the thresholds for like a development plan. Um, or if they're pursuing an NPD or a special use permit, which to Diane's point, that's usually these projects are of a scale that they're already triggering those requirements anyway. So, um, I think it's fair to say that probably most tax incentive projects you see, whether there's UR requests or a development plan is, is the question.
So do they, um, I guess I'm wondering in the staff report, is it possible for the areas that we know are blighted because of the designation they've already received and will never get a tax incentive plan to approve? In those areas, are you able to just clarify that? So I'm thinking particularly to James' point about the, the project that we did see, even though we, even though based on what you're telling us now, that it probably was already approved previously as a, through blight, is that something we could just have as a? As a, as knowledge to make our decision? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that's probably something we can put in the case history. Information is so, so that you know there's a previously approved plan and if uh it's light declaration on that.
Because I think sometimes when people are asking for waivers, we just want to know, oh, okay, well, here's what makes that valid because of the areas and.
Yeah, and and selfishly, if someone asks me about why I voted on a certain case. And I don't really know the history of, of kind of the incentives and, I don't know. And being able to explain like, well, this incentive was improved based on the zoning and project plan, it seemed to be. Uh, a good project. It would just would be nice to have that so we can kind of um in a concise way so we can. If we do get questions after the fact, we can say, well, we don't approve incentives, but this is what happened. Um, so that'd be super helpful.
Okay, we'll work to start adding those.
Yeah, Joe, I don't want to belay because I know we've got other slides, but I'm not an expert on blight. So if somebody comes and says it's blighted, here's the report and they're a qualified engineer or whatever it is. I'm, I'm not going to be able to, ha- ha- how does, how's the commission push back and evaluate whether it's blighted or not?
Well, there are, there are specific criteria. Again, these don't lie in the code. These are, I think, that's state law. Is that right, Sarah? Where this stuff lies usually?
Yes, that's correct. Each statutory agency is governed by its own statute. And so each statute contains factors. There's like five, I think five factors. For each age. And so typically the incentive um agency hires an outside consultant that specializes in. Light studies and they present usually pretty detailed light studies and they'll give you the facts. To support their determination of blight under each of those factors. And so that's the way. That you could push back on that is just sort of looking at the evidence that they present. And, you know, asking questions if you, if you're unsure or unclear as to whether that evidence supports. A blight finding.
All right, Diane, I think you were going to cover this slide.
I think I get the next couple, yep.
Yep.
So just so that you kind of see some of the planning tools, if you will, whenever projects come in. So all, we always look to the long range plan. Now, we look at that, um, those long range area plans for when, especially whenever we're doing rezonings. Because we want to make sure and see what that plan kind of was directing or, you know, what what the recommendations are. But also there's a lot more criteria in the area plans than just that um area, the land use map. And so you, even if there isn't a rezoning, you may still see comments from long range planning, giving guidance based on what the area plan identified. We also use the development code, of course, chapter eighty eight, and Joe's going to kind of hit the highlights of that um later on in the presentation. Um, we, of course, use zoning maps. Um, parcel viewer is our friend. Um, and the community loves our parcel viewer, has a lot of detailed information on it. And major street plan, so this is the document um that identifies street classifications and. Whether it's an arterial street, a local street, how wide will the street be? What will the street include? Um, and those are of course for for more of our major streets. Also identifies parks and boulevards. Um, which there is a whole section in the code that talks about the design standards um for properties that are adjacent to parkways and boulevards. And we've adopted um four overlay districts. Um, and overlay district is something that sets. So even though there's an underlying zoning, we can come in and place another level of zoning and design guidelines. If need be for certain parts of the community. So our first one that we did was on truce. Prior to, I should say, prior to having overlay districts, we had something called special review districts. And those were more, um, those were based on having a committee who reviewed projects before it came to the planning commission and. It just got really um, really red tape and very heavy and it was hard to maintain um committees. Um, and finding people interested in doing those. So we ended up um under chapter eighty eight, which we adopted in January of twenty eleven. We um, we changed a lot of the over to overlay districts. So. Um, truce has one, Independence Avenue has one, Marlboro Neighborhood has an overlay district. And then Main Street, we changed that S R D um into an overlay. Again, in there, there are design guidelines and they can have land use changes. So even though the underlying zoning is there. Um, an overlay district can effectively change what the uses that are allowed. They can make it more. Uh, more restrictive or less restrictive depending. Um, so then we also have a trails K C, so it identifies where we propose all the trails to be in the city. Um, some of you are probably familiar that we have a bike plan that's still kind of out there um waiting. And to get final approvals for. So those are documents that we use. And then we just have other general policies of the city that we review as well. Joe, next line, here we go. So um I understand that there's been some questions about some impact fees. So we have two impact fees in the city. We have the arterial street impact fee. Um, the first phase of it was approved in two thousand with a second um portion being approved in two thousand one. The city hired um a um consultant in nineteen ninety eight to do an evaluation of. Um, the, to to look to do this impact fee ordinance. The point of an impact fee ordinance is to. Um, prior to this adoption, the developer would just, they would just improve their half of an arterial street. Um, so it was determined that, um, and I wasn't here at the time, Joe wasn't here, but. They decide, they decided to look at doing an impact fee. And so they, um. This, the study was done and through communications, um, the development community was not very happy. Because the fee was pretty significant. And that it's all based on, there's a whole formula and I I can't go through it. I don't know it well enough. Um, it's really getting in the weeds. But effectively, it's looking at how much of an impact will this development make on the major art, onto the arterial streets? So the main roadways of the city. And then based on that, it will then identify what the impact fee is. There are eight different areas of this city, um, eight different. Oh, I can't think what we call them, but effectively.
Fee zones.
Pardon?
They just call them zones.
That's right, yeah. There are different ones in the city. Um, and so when a developer is charged this impact fee, then that fee goes into that zone area. And then whenever the city is ready to make improvements to the arterial street, then they'll take those funds and put it towards. But back when this was done, just so you all are aware, it was decided that they would go to a fifty percent. So I meant for easy numbers, let's say it's, you know, a thousand dollars, then it goes down to five hundred dollars is what the developer has to pay. So as you can imagine, in two thousand, um, the dollar amounts versus today, because we have not made any changes to the fee. Um, the, the dollars are significantly different, but also on top of that, um. The development community were granted waivers, so or um. Um, what's the word I'm, Joe, what's the word I'm looking for? Not waivers.
Credits.
Credits, credits, thank you. And so, um, so there's a whole list of credits out there for. Um, a lot of developers. And so then they will sell their credits um for cheaper. And so then those credits get used. So I guess my point to you all is, is yes, we have an arterial street impact fee. I will tell you, we don't collect very much in that impact fee. And um, but it's only used if, again, there are streets that are unimproved and. It it goes into those different zones to be used, so.
Diane's brush cylinder again. On the impact, what's the scope of the impact? Is it just for the street or is it for other infrastructure like water pipes and? And so forth?
It's only for the public street.
Okay, so it doesn't include water relocation, wastewater relocation or anything like that?
Right, so the developer has to install whatever is needed for their development. And if there's a line that needs to be brought up, then they can either work with the water department to see if it's something that we were planning to do or if they have to extend it.
Okay.
And so, and then of course, um, like in Twin Creeks, we completely opened that up a few years ago in the city. Um, bore the cost of that, of that extension of those main trunk lines to run it through there to open up that development.
Does the city have any appetite right now to reevaluate those fees? I mean, if that study was done more than twenty years ago?
Right. So a, an audit was done um in, I'll double check my date. December of twenty seventeen and some of that came out of, the planning commission at the time. Um, was a little frustrated by some of this. And so they wrote a letter to the council. And so those are ways that you all can, you know. Some of, some of the ways you all can affect change is that if there are things like this that you see, you can write letters to council as a, as a committee as a whole. That comes from the chair. Expressing concern about something. So that's what, so they did send that. There was an audit that was done in twenty seventeen. Um, there was a committee that was put together and we talked about some things. But really, we need to have um another consultant review what was done then and come back around and do a full study again. And that's kind of where it stopped.
And Diane, that credit trading, is that they can have any credits within the city or are they restricted to areas? In the city or zones in the city?
I think they're restricted to the zones in the city, as I recall. Those credits, though, went back to the late nineteen seventies. So, so if you built something in nineteen eighty two. And then you identified how much that was, then you got credits for it. And so now here we are in twenty twenty. And someone can get credits off of that.
Wow. Yeah, something else to keep in mind about the impact fees for uh roadways is it only. Is applicable to arterial streets as identified in the, in the major transportation plant. So a residential street that's in your neighborhood or some other development, it it doesn't apply there. It's only for the arterial streets as identified in the. Major street plan.
That's right.
And sometimes that gets frustrating from the planning commission side, if you have a s- school or something. That that gets built and you want to make some public improvements to serve it, but it's not on the arterial street, so the. It doesn't get done or may be on the arterial street and the money is not available to make those street improvements. So it's good and bad.
That's right. And that, and that's usually, I think, when we've had the biggest concern is when we built several schools up in the Northland. And there were arterial streets identifying on the major street plan, there was no funding. And so now we've got two lane. Unimproved roads going to brand new schools with children trying to get there. So it's a struggle. So the other impact fee that we have is the park impact fee. Um, this is um managed by the Parks Department, as you can imagine. The point of the park impact fee is that the idea that every resident should have park land to be able to um to use. And so um, there is a, again, a whole calculation that's done. Um, which will identify, it's based on residential use, so it's not for commercial use or office use. They don't pay into the impact fee. It's only for residential. And then um it's based on number of units. Um, every year, there's an evaluation done on how much the um park land that may have been purchased in the last five years. There's an average taken, so we kind of keep up with the times on the cost of park land. Um, and so that fee adjusts each year um as to, and it then the. Um, amount um can go up and down on that park and park fee amount um based on um value of land. So there's also an option, so a developer can, um, say there's a hundred units and then they have to pay an X dollars per unit. Um, they can elect to also do um provide for park land in the development or park type amenities. Those are reviewed by the Parks Department to determine whether or not if we think it meets um the same criteria or is still providing the same. Level of amenity. So they can either pay the fee or they can attempt to to provide park or they can do a part and part. So for instance, in a single family subdivision, if a developer wants to provide a pool area and some trails through the subdivision. Then um the park area, they'll look at the square foot of like where the pool area and the surrounding property is. And then um the trail, it's X number of feet um on either side of the trail. So then there'll be, you know, we'll see how much acreage. Total ends up and then see how that balances against how many acres of land. Which then calculates to a fee. I'm not sure I'm describing this very well. Um, anyway, then it determines whether or not um. If they have provided enough or if they have to still pay more money. Or if it's an apartment development and they have nowhere to put any sort of park amenity or even a pool facility or anything, then they'll just pay directly into the money. Into the fee. Those fees also, um, although I don't think they used to be today, they do. Identify where they're located and then they provide the monies towards improving parks or purchasing additional parks. In the same vicinity of where the fee is paid into.
Yeah, that ordinance, Diane, it spits out, or the formula that's set, that's established by that ordinance. What it spits out is a number of acres to be dedicated. Um, and then the developer has the option to choose whether they want to dedicate that as private space within their development. Um, and and program that private space with recreational features of some type. Or if they want to dedicate it to the, to the Parks and Recreation Department, which most people don't do that. Um, or if they want to pay the money in lieu of either of those options.
Yeah, and Parks doesn't typically want that, that we're not a um pocket park community um per se, and we have too much to take care of as this, so, yeah. So the city planning commission does not have the right to waive any of these fees, just to be very clear about that. So. You you can state that you have concern or or whatever it is, but that you all do not have the right to waive any fees at all. Okay. Next slide.
Diane, just real quickly, um, I understand that we do not have the right to waive fees, but. Um, if this is going to a final determination body like the council, can we offer recommendations?
Um, I, I think you can, I, I'll, you know what, I'm gonna leave. Sarah, would you please comment on that?
Sure, um, there's nothing in the code that um allows a waiver of the fees. Um, I know there was discussion at one of our recent meetings about perhaps. Um, recommending a policy that would allow that. Um, and I, you know, that's, that's fine if if the commission would like to uh. Make some sort of policy recommendation to the council, you have that authority under your rules, but currently. That's not authorized. And I think I mentioned this when, when this came up at the CPC meeting. I think if. If the commission wanted to go in that direction, I I would strongly recommend um. Consulting with the Parks Department and the Parks Board. Uh, there's just. The Parks Board is somewhat unique under the city charter in terms of its jurisdiction and authority. And I, I think it would be best to discuss that issue with the Parks Board before you move forward with that. Get their input. I suspect that that they would have concerns about that, so I I just think it would be best to to discuss that with them.
Yeah, I'm just figuring out, um, probably when is the best time for that to happen? I'm just looking at it from an equity perspective. Um, if we see a development that's in an area where that cause creates a burden for the development to happen. And they don't have the space or the resources or the tax uh incentives to be able to put a rooftop pool. Or some private dedicated space, is there a way where we can have a recommendation as it goes to the final body? That we would like to see a wave. Doesn't mean that we're enforcing it, it's just a recommendation to do it or not. Um, that's, that was my question. Is it within our purview to offer recommendations?
Well, I mean, I think you can always make whatever recommendation you would like, but I, I guess my opinion would be at this point in time. The council wouldn't have authority to act on that recommendation because the code doesn't allow for a waiver of that fee.
Who is the final decision body on that?
Well, I guess it depends on what type of application we're talking about. But I think most of the time. With a parkland fee, you're probably talking about a development plan. From, uh, you know, uh. Uh, and so those are ultimately going to go to the city council.
But I think what Sarah's saying too, um, Kokiya is that. If there's no, if the authority doesn't exist to waive it, um, the recommendations kind of mu- move. Because the ultimate decision maker doesn't have authority to do the same. So that's just something to keep in mind. I definitely see what you're saying, but perhaps that it's best, better to look in a different direction for how to. Help um these types of projects rather than, another thing to keep in mind is that this is an impact fee. So. What it's based upon is the impact the development has. So if you're. If you're wanting to waive a fee, you're essentially saying there's no impact. Or the impact is minimized, but the reality is, is if it's a residential project, there's going to be more people moving there. that have the, and what the fee is based on is that the theory that those folks deserve recreational opportunities. So if we start waiving them for some projects, that's, even if you had the authority to do that, that would potentially undermine the impact fee altogether. In my opinion.
Yeah, I heard you saying, I guess I'm still, I'm like, who determines a waiver or not? And if I just think about the project we heard a few weeks ago with Swope, they were trying to find a sidewalk to connect to the Rush Creek Trail. But still, there was a a fee for parkland dedication. And they were asking for a waiver, one of the conditions. And so I'm just trying to figure out what's our role in that. And if we thought that it was a good project and they said, hey, this is an undue burden, whoever gets the final decision, are they also looking at that? Because that can't be for us.
I think if this is a topic that commission's interested in discussing, we can definitely set something up with people from the Parks Department. At Sarah's point, I definitely think you need to talk, we need to, if we want to continue to proceed this, we need to talk with them.
Thank you.
Diane, on this slide, was I covering this or you? I don't care either way.
Go ahead.
Okay. So this is really, we've kind of gone over this, but there's, as I mentioned, like 38 different agencies that review projects that before they get to you all, up to 38 different agencies. Most projects have anywhere from 10 to 15, depending on where they're located and what type of project they are. But some of the external agencies that do get involved, MoDOT is one of our more frequent external reviewers. Anytime a project is adjacent to or near a state highway, they are a reviewer. ATA, we do send them information to review. So they have the opportunity. We rarely receive any comments from them. Some of the utility companies are involved on a case by case basis. The Army Corps of Engineers does get involved when there are, you know, floodplain issues or wetland issues, but that typically end up, they are, their involvement is not as so much as a reviewer, but after, after, typically after approval or before they even come to planning commission. Federal and state. So this, I think, is in reference, Diane, to properties that are federally owned or state owned.
Right, or, right, or as an example, UMKC, not govern them. So anytime they do development, if they build a new student facility or dorms or anything like that, just as an example, we have no jurisdiction over them. So they, if you see construction going on there again, and you didn't see a project, that's why. So they, same with like the federal courthouse to the north of us, and they have that horrible parking lot just to the west of them, and it's asphalt with a big chain link fence. We have no jurisdiction over them. So that's just reminding you all that. So anything that's state or federal, they trump us and can do whatever they want.
So we're past time and there's more to this presentation. And I know that we wanted to talk about the rules and regs too. Kobe probably already left. I know he had a meeting at 10 that he had to be in. Would the rest of the commissioners like to keep going and finish this?
He's actually still here. He got someone else to cover for him.
Okay. Sorry, I can't see who was participating since I'm sharing the PowerPoint. Would you all like me to continue? If, if not, this is a good stopping point.
I'm good till 11.
Okay.
I'm good as well.
Okay. Sarah, are you able to stay on?
Yes, I'm fine. I'm good. Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right. So what we wanted to go through here is kind of talk about the code, which we did a bit in orientation, but we can stop for more discussion if necessary as we go through this. But basically, the way to break down the code is kind of to talk about the various, what we call series in the codes. Everything starts with 88 and then we have the 10 series is the introductory provisions. This is the boring but really important stuff. Not that there's part of the code that's exciting necessarily, but this is the part that really just establishes how to interpret the code. How do we transition from the old code, which predated this one to the current one? What is the legal framework? So we do turn to this on an as needed basis when we need guidance for how to interpret a zoning provision. Or when there is misunderstanding or dispute about whether a plan approved under the old code is still effective in today's world. We look at that section of the code. It rarely is discussed in the context of planning commission. The 100 series is where all of our base zoning districts are discussed in the code. And so Diane, you know, talked about overlay districts. And you'll see that those are in the 200 series of our code. So these are all, every part of the city has a base zoning. There's not one acre of the city that doesn't have zoning. And so this is where we talk about what the residential districts are and what our office, business and commercial districts are, what our downtown districts are, what our manufacturing districts are. There's, you, from time to time, there's discussion that you hear from people saying, criticizing our code, saying it doesn't have a mixed use zoning district. That's actually incorrect. It's a misunderstanding of our code for someone to say that because most of our residential districts, in fact, all of them allow non, some non-residential uses. And all of our office, business and commercial districts allow residential uses in addition to commercial. So we do have, and the downtown districts do as well. Where it gets into some more separate, the classical separation of uses is more in our manufacturing districts, but even there, for example, we allow residents to use, sometimes it requires a special use permit. But that's just to make sure that it's not truly a residence development that's located in an area that's incompatible for that type of development due to the manufacturing presence in the area. And we're one, it's important to keep in mind that when you think of the whole metro area, we have the vast majority of manufacturing uses are located here. So we do have a lot of area of the city that is zone manufacturing. And it's also some of these, limiting some of these other uses is not just because we don't want the mixture of uses there or also just preserving the space for future manufacturing development. It's hard to rezone to manufacturing because a lot of people don't want that type of use in their area. So we do try to retain what we have so that it can be put to good use in the future.
Joe, just a comment on that. So for instance, I think the Wonderloft project is an example of manufacturing that was switched to residential and I believe it just needed a special use permit. It didn't require rezoning. So if you were to go to parcel view, or I think it's still a manufacturing zone, correct? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay.
Like, go ahead.
We, I've heard like commissioners talk about like spot zoning and the trouble with that, or sometimes we'll see a space where we have like a daycare and a car lot and office building. So is it that you wait to, you have an area plan to kind of correct spot zoning? Would that be it? Or is it that people will just always get a special, special use permit?
Right. So that's a good, really good question. The area plans are often, it's important to kind of keep in mind, the area plans are developed by the neighborhoods largely, with, with obviously our, our staff guidance from our staff. What they often identify is essentially down zoning, a lot of what you might consider overzoned areas. We have a lot of corridors and it's really kind of probably, if you laid a map of the old streetcar lines in the city over our zoning map, I think what you'll find is a lot of the old streetcar lines, they were zoned commercially. Whenever, probably, I don't have any evidence, but I have no way to say otherwise either. I would guess around the time we adopted, first adopted zoning in 1923 is when they were zoned that way. And over time, they've been chipped away or changed slightly on a development or case by case basis. What hasn't happened, at least not across the board, citywide, is down zoning those areas to reflect the area plan recommendation. Sometimes the area plans recommend down zoning essentially, because they recommend a zoning that's, that's less intense than what the actual zoning is. So you'll see, you tend to see this the most with like auto oriented uses where they, because they tend to require a special use permit, but not a rezoning. And they, they'll come before you with a special use permit and you'll see that the recommendation in the area plan for the future land use is not consistent with the current zoning. And that's just because there's not been a down zoning of that area essentially. All right. So the 200 series is the part of the code talking about our overlay and special purpose districts. So some of our special, you know, Diane kind of talked about overlays, so I won't go into that too much, but you, you rarely, you, you tend to see some projects that are in some of the common overlays that Diane already touched on. There are some other overlays that you rarely see, if ever, anything in. Those are listed here. But some of the special purpose districts, you do see projects in quite a lot, like the Shoal Creek District is, there's a lot of development activity in that area of the city. So you tend to see a lot of projects in that area. And it's basically the area, kind of a triangular shaped area between 435, I-35 and north or around Highway 152. And that general area tends to be zoned SC Shoal Creek. But you also have AGR. So a lot of the outline areas that are semi-rural in the city are zoned AGR. They have separate special regulations. Underground space, so like the underground storage areas, those are zoned separately as well. But you, again, rarely see projects with that zoning.
And it's the, just so if you look, sorry, just if you look on the zoning map, you'll see it'll have like an M1-5/US. So anytime you see that, that means that everything under the surface was rezoned to the underground space and everything above is your standard zoning up above it.
So like the Hunt Midwest Business Park area, south of Worlds of Fun, like that area is exactly what Diane just described. It's mostly zoned M1-5 above and US below. So the 300 series of the code are use regulations. And so basically, the use tables in the 100 series of the code, they set forth a list of uses that are specifically defined in our code. So you'll hear a lot of people say, well, this is a used car lot. Well, used car lot in our code is we have light equipment sales and rental outdoor or indoor. That's the technical term for that. And it's regulated differently, whether it's indoor or outdoor. And then for some of those specific uses, we've decided, or the councils decided that they deserve their own special standards that apply to them. And that's where these standards are located. So for example, except animal services uses like dog runs or kennels have specific standards that require they be separated from residential properties by a certain distance. Drive-through facilities, which is one of the more common uses you see in terms of where the use standards come up, have additional screening and landscaping requirements. And sometimes like a port to care over the drive-through depending on what the developer can pick and choose kind of what standards would apply in that case. So it, it just, there's a, this is not an exhaustive list of it. There's more uses than this. One that you saw, I think this commission saw it a month or two ago, and you probably get five or six a year, is neighborhood serving retail. And this might get to the question of adaptive reuse. It's been raised a few times. We do have a provision in the code that says buildings that were originally constructed for commercial purpose, but are zoned residential, because they're embedded in the middle of a neighborhood perhaps, can be reused as neighborhood serving retail with a special use permit. So you tend to see those every now and then where someone wants to take an older commercial building and repurpose it. The 400 series of the code is where our development standards are. So this is where we talk about what the land, with the landscaping requires. This is unrelated to uses and more about just when you're designing a site, what do you have to accommodate regardless of the use? So this is where we talk about what the parking, minimum parking requirements are, what the parking space and aisle dimension should be, what the landscaping and screening requirements are, what the outdoor lighting requirements are. And this is all very specific. It doesn't just say you should do some landscaping. It says you should have one street feet per 50 feet linear feet of street. So it gets very specific. It says for outdoor lighting that the lighting can't exceed 0.2 foot candles at the property line. And the developer has to, or the applicant has to provide plans demonstrating that they meet these standards. And we do go through those in our staff report. And we, if we evaluate the plan and if it doesn't meet the standards, that's typically reflected in our plan corrections to you. There are times, like in the case of a UR or an MPD project, and even sometimes in a development plan where the developers just seeking entitlement of the project overall, and they've not yet engaged an engineer to perform a photometric study, which is the study you prepare for outdoor lighting to confirm whether it complies. So sometimes we will say, the developers elected to do a project plan at a later date or an MPD final plan, whatever the case may be, given the zoning. And at that time, we will evaluate the lighting, for example. So you do see that sometimes, but most of the time, we know by the time it gets to you, whether it's meeting the standards.
Maybe just a comment on that. I feel like the lighting question has taken up a lot of time in many of our cases. And so I, I feel like, especially because I've been through that process on the other side, anytime I hear anything about lighting, I kind of feel like, yeah, it's taken care of. It's not really ours discretion to evaluate. So I think maybe just that needs to be something that as a commission, we need to just make sure to emphasize that that's really not a conversation we need to even have.
Right. Yeah, I can assure the commission that, so basically what's happening when it comes to you is the developer, in the case of an MPD or UR project, can propose a project that does not meet the development standards, but you have to be aware of that. In other words, they have to request it and we will make that part of the conversation. And then that's up for discussion, right? But in all other cases, the applicant has to meet those development standards unless they get a variance from the board. So I, in those cases, you can rest assured they're going to meet the requirement. And so unless you're really wanting to be more restrictive than what the code requires, and there may be times where you want to be for certain types of situations, then discussing, discussing these standards might be warranted in that in those cases. But in most other cases, they're going to have to meet them regardless. And we're just trying to let you know in our staff reports that we've evaluated it and meeting it, or that we are unable to evaluate it at this time because they haven't provided the plan, but we're okay with it going forward because they will have to provide the plan later and they don't, they're not asking for any sort of waiver from it.
And George, stormwater management would be in that list, right? As well?
It is not. It's a separate part. It's, it's water services standards. The closest thing that we have in the zoning code related to stormwater would be our stream buffer ordinance.
Okay.
And those standards, standards are governed under APWA. So it's all the, those are the standards that water and land development division use.
So the 500 series of the code is the process section of the code outlines exactly how we're supposed to, whether we're supposed to conduct public notice for certain cases, whether we're supposed to have a public hearing. And it, it talks about really all of our processes that we have in the city. It also talks about, this is where our public engagement ordinance lives. It lives in this part of the code. So we pretty well outline that, I think, in our, in our staff reports. But this is kind of one of those areas where I'd like to just see what questions you have about process because talking about it could take hours. Do y'all have any questions about some of our processes for case types that you see? It varies for each case type.
Hey, I had a question about the plat that you spoke to earlier. So some of these that we're seeing, the final plats, even after construction has been done, really, I think what I heard from you is we're just making sure that they adhere to what they Really, I think what I heard from you is we're just making sure that they adhere to what they originally said in the preliminary. It's not that we're going to ask them to tear the building down or anything like that. If it doesn't get approved, it's really just adhering to that first approval.
Yeah. I mean, the real planning on, when it comes to plating occurs with the preliminary plat. I, I, I mean, our code requires final plats to come to planning commission and city council, but I also think the state law just requires the council to approve those. So I think that's the main reason why you see them is just to evaluate it, is because it's required that it come to city council, number one, but also just to make sure it meets the preliminary plat you already saw. Otherwise there's not, your scope is, and staff scope is really narrow on the final plats.
And that's why you, you put it on the consent docket, right? Because it's so, I mean, if they've already checked everything and said, okay, it's meeting everything. It was under the preliminary, it's met conditions, whatever. And then they just push it through on the consent docket.
Can I ask a question about the consent docket? Cause for instance, last time I think there was a church that we approved on the consent agenda and it still had some comments from staff to make some corrections, which I think we approved it. We all agreed with those comments, but I, I guess I was wondering why projects like that were on the consent agenda as opposed to a previous church we had seen that we went through the public hearing process.
It's probably, that church would have probably been a project plan. And so those do go on consent because they're not required to have a public hearing. Although as a matter of practice, the commission, the chairs of the last, the past chair and Kobe has been as well, has this call for testimony. So you guys are offering it, but I don't think you have to, it's required to be performed. So procedurally for project plans and final plats and MPD final plans, since you don't have to by, by these standards here in the 500 series of the code, since you don't have to have a public hearing, we put those on consent. But you have the right to pull them off if you want to discuss them. Any other questions about those?
Okay, I have one more related to, so variances go through the BZA. But what we see is waivers on some of those setbacks and things. Can you kind of distinguish the difference between that?
Yeah, that's another good question. You're actually going to see an amendment on July 7th that kind of tackles this very question. So I won't go into that detail, but I will say that there's, there's a lot of confusion, I think, on staff's part, but also the public and the development community's part about what's a waiver versus, and these are all terms of the code uses. Waiver modification, deviation, adjustment, variance, special exception. What is the difference between each? And there is a difference for most part between each of those. But sometimes they get used interchangeably and it causes confusion. A variance is most of the time variances are people are homeowners that are just wanting to add a deck or a screen porch or something to their house. So they're not getting any sort of other, they don't need, they're just trying to get a building permit to do it. And at that point, we conduct a zoning review. It's usually a different division of our department, not my staff, that they conduct a zoning review to compare what's proposed against building setbacks, for example, that are in the zoning code. And if they don't meet them, then they go get a variance and that's, that's what the board of zoning adjustment is charged with. There are occasions, particularly with special use permits, where you will see a special use permit that also has variance requests. And sometime your job is not to weigh in on zoning variances because it, it just goes to BZA. They don't need a recommendation from you on the variance. But sometimes you'll see references to that in the staff report. Because it does go on the BZA and they do have the right to make a variance, grant a variance with this special use permit. Not to the use, but to characteristics of the building, for example, if it needs a setback variance. Those are pretty common. But a waiver is going to be more typically in the code, it's used in reference to waivers for public improvement requirements that you tend to see with a development plan or an MPD UR plan. Let's say someone doesn't want to build curb and gutter on a street, that would usually require a waiver. The code also refers to modifications and frankly, I'm kind of unclear at this point about what the difference between a waiver and a modification would be, but they both have to do with public improvements. And then deviations, you sometimes see with development plans, the code does allow deviations to the Latin building standards through a development plan process. Sarah, if I'm getting any of those wrong, jump in because I know I conflate the two sometimes. But so sometimes you'll see those as well. And hopefully it'll become more clear in the coming weeks as we push this amendment through. All right. The 600 series of the code is about administration and enforcement. This is where it talks about what the review decision-making bodies are and it does reference the planning commission, of course. The development review committee is referenced here. City council, of course, is as well. It also talks about non-conformities, which doesn't come up, up too much when, in cases that you guys see, but my children are walking in, hold on. They're still in the car. Okay. It doesn't, it doesn't really come up too often for planning commission. But sometimes you'll see references from staff to what we call CLNUs, which is a very bureaucratic term that is certificate of legal non, non-conforming use. We do grant those to document a legal non-conformity. And those are, those are situations like, for example, let's say, let's just use the truce overlay, for example. Let's say that prior to the overlay, the zoning allowed car, used car lots, which it did. And the overlay does not. And when the overlay passed, the property owners can, can continue, that use becomes non-conforming when the overlay passes. They can continue the non-conforming use for a ver, a very long time, so long as they don't discontinue the use for a period of time. And they can document that with a certificate of legal non-conformity. There's a record that shows that they're allowed to continue. Another section of this is about violations, penalties and enforcement. So whenever there is a code violation, we would cite the section of the ordinance and you might sometimes see references to that. I know we had a couple of cases recently that resulted from code violations. And you do see those from time to time where someone's attempting to make it right by rezoning. The 700 series is actually not used. So if we're not just skipping something, it's literally not used in the code. So it goes on to 800 series, which is where we define all of our uses and other terminology and methods of interpretation, like how to measure sign area, for example. So that concludes the presentation. Are there any additional questions before we move on?
Joe, I have one question.
Yep.
And this has to deal with going back to the old arterial street kind of comment, but every now and again, you'll get a development that comes in that's in the middle of the block. And part of the requirements is to build out half the street with curb gutter, stormwater sidewalks and all of that. And there's nothing on either side of, of, of that development. You know, to continue the sidewalk or curves on. So at, at times there's been a discussion about holding money or putting money in a, an account. What's the preferred process or, or thought about just holding off on that, on those street improvements or whatever until rest of the street gets improved?
Yeah. So, yeah. So I think what you're describing, it's a pretty common situation where someone is, let's say they're doing a infill project in an area that is not built to city standards. It's a street without curb and gutter or stormwater or sidewalks, for example. And they are required by code because the code simply says whenever you're subdividing property, you have to make these public improvements. They're required by code to do, to build all those things that I just rattled off. And in some cases, it simply doesn't make sense, in my opinion, to make them build a, you know, a 150 foot strip of sidewalk and curb and gutter when the rest of the block doesn't have any of it. And in those cases, they typically, what happens is the applicant will request waivers to those requirements. What happens if you grant a waiver is then no one ever has to build it. Except for the city, periodically it's, it might come in and build it. But I think as all of you know, the city is, doesn't have a lot of resources to do all that. So, so what Kobe's referring to is sometimes there is a request to do like a deferral agreement of those public improvements. I believe that's what you're referring to, Kobe. And I frankly don't understand fully what those agreements contain. I don't know if Diane has ever seen one, but they are typically secured or unsecured, which I believe means there's a time limit to it or not a time limit. And usually it's, if it's, I'm getting way beyond, so someone, Kobe or Diane, if you know more about this, usually, usually the agreements I've seen are unsecured, but it's uncommon for there to be an agreement to begin with. What's more common is for there to simply just be a waiver request. And they're frankly, the code does not give us, in my opinion, very many tools to work with. I'm aware of other communities that have like, that the code outlines a process for development agreements or like a formation of benefit districts of some type to where, you know, you, you get that particular applicant to consent to being in some sort of benefit district or an assessment area that would be created by the city at a later date to assess fees to help make those. But we don't have that framework in place in our code. And I'm not even sure if, if we could. I don't know if that's a state law issue or not. There's not a good way, Kobe, in my opinion, to deal with those. What you often see is, is the waivers. Diane or Sarah, do you want to add anything to that?
I agree. We normally, the only thing that we've been able to do here is the, again, the waiver or the deferral agreement. You're, you're exactly correct on that. So. And, and we have them and then they sit and then, you know, the reality is, is that we just don't make a lot of improvements. Yeah. I mean, we're, we're looking at kind of those bigger, major streets. And so these side areas, more, I think what Kobe's referencing. You know, you just don't see us come through there and make those improvements. So that the deferral agreements usually sit there for quite a while. And then I, I'm not sure if we've ever even gone back on them. I don't know. I don't have any more history on it.
Yeah. So we're not even doing any kind of fund either, are we? Where you just put $100,000 in some kind of fund. Okay. So I'm just, I mean, I kind of know what we do, but I didn't know the direction we're kind of heading with those kinds of things because you'll see them from time to time. You know, we want to defer this until some other later date. So it seems like we want to try to go to that, that route versus providing a waiver altogether. It's just, just an opinion.
And I think if the planning commission wants to move in that direction, it would be a good work session topic at some point. And it would ultimately require an amendment to the code because the code's very black and white about public improvements. It just says subdividers have to do them, period, unless they're waived. And it doesn't provide proportion. It doesn't say that they can contribute a certain percentage or anything like that. So that would definitely be, would require further conversation.
That's a conversation I would like to continue because I think there does need to be a a fund set up to come back and put those improvements in as the developments in that area continue. So I would like to see us do that.
I, I would agree with that.
I guess I'm wondering if it could be similar to the, to the park land approach, which has the money in lieu of approach. If you don't want to provide a certain amenity, you provide to that fund. I don't know if that's the structure we could just replicate. My, my thought and I get, you know, depart, different departments. It's hard to get everybody on the same page, but I'd like to see the conversation around parks be more similar to the public works and impact fees that those conversations happen together. Cause ultimately they're all about infrastructure, even if it's a park or a street or water management or utilities. It's kind of all, the developer doesn't really care. So I think maybe if we, if we could create a similar structure for all of them, it would be easier for a developer to manage.
I agree with that as well. So that would be part of what I was looking at, some way to assess a fee that would be used at a later date to complete it. Complete that infrastructure.
Okay. We can put that down in our notes for future discussion. Should we move on to the rules and regs?
Yeah.
Joe, just so you're aware, I don't know if you've seen, but you, two of your planning commissioners have had to leave.
Okay.
Um, I, you know, I covered the, I think the most important aspects of the rules and regs during the orientation meetings that we held regarding ex parte communications and conflicts of interest. So I only had really two quick things to mention, but Joe, or maybe this is for Kobe or the others. Did you have specific issues with the rules that you wanted me to go over?
I think, I think the biggest thing that I've heard is just people, Tyler and a couple of other folks have brought up questions about the number of continuances. And I think the rules are silent on that. I don't think there's any limitation whatsoever, other than it just says that the CPC has the authority to grant them.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I mean, I saw Tyler, I, I saw your email about, I think, I think you raised the issue of allowing staff to grant continuances in some situations. And so my only reservation with that, I mean, I definitely understand the, the point you're making about let's try to do this more expeditiously. And I think there's different ways that we can do that. I'm a little concerned about staff granting a continuance once the case has been placed on your docket. Because at that point, it's really within the commission's jurisdiction to take action. And the other concern I have with that is that, I mean, a lot of times, you know, there's not going to be any controversy if you guys continue something that's been advertised, but there are definitely situations where you could have a big crowd show up, right? Because they received notices in the mail. And this is particularly a concern that I have once we start meeting at city hall again. People take time off from work. They come downtown. They want the opportunity to testify. And I think if staff has already essentially said, this is being continued and all those folks don't know about it because staff has only communicated that to the applicant. People might be upset about that. And I think, I, I, at least for me, I think it would be good for you to preserve the flexibility that you currently have to say, okay, look, we're not going to make a decision today, but we've got all these people here and we're going to let you give some testimony today. Does that make sense? That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, that certainly makes sense. I think the only situations that we had seen thus far were ones where we didn't discuss it, even if someone from the public was present. So we haven't had one of those unique situations where there were many, many people. And so I was thinking that since we ended up continuing it anyway, we'd actually end up saving the public time. Because instead of having to sit through and wait for us to continue it, they would show up, realize it's already continued. Instead of sitting around for 40 minutes and sit around for five minutes and leave, we've not had a situation which you're describing where maybe, you know, a dozen people show up and we decide to hear something. I have no familiarity as to whether that happens. And that's something where, what I was thinking is the council or the commission would relinquish our, yeah, some of our ability to hear those things or to continue them to staff. And then that staff on, on a somewhat case-by-case basis can determine. So if there are a hundred cases that staff elects to continue from now to in the next, you know, six months, they could in essence, also decide to not do that with 10 because they think that there might be some public who are coming to testify. And so they might say, ah, ordinarily this is one that I do think I would continue. And so it wouldn't say that, you know, on a hundred out of a hundred, staff's deciding, let's go ahead and continue these because these aren't ready to be heard. It would more be that like, we, we have a very good feeling that 75 to 90 out of these, no one's going to show up. We need to continue these anyway. So let's go ahead and make the decision. That's where, of course it changes, but you know, I have faith in Joe making that decision. And I, I don't think we would run into situations where we're wasting a lot of people's time.
One thing could I suggest maybe that would help? And Sarah, you tell me if you. One thing could I suggest maybe that would help? Um, and Sarah, you tell me if you think it's okay. Is making a gr- granting all the continuances in one motion as using the date specified on the docket. That we continue all cases as specified on the docket.
Yeah, that's one thing I was going to suggest, and even if we want to take it a step further. And we don't have to do this, but this is an option. Um, at city council committee hearings. If there's a, you know, there's a bunch of ordinances on the docket, right, and they want to continue, let's say they want to continue five of these ordinances. Because the developers made a request. They don't even vote on that at at council, right? The chairman or chairwoman of of a council committee can simply announce and say, hey. We've decided we're continuing all of these cases to X Y Z date. And if there's no objection from. A a committee member can say, well, wait a second, you know, I I object to that without discussion. I want to have a discussion. And at that point in time, there has to be a motion and a vote, but as long as no commissioner objects. Then the chairman can simply say, we're continuing these cases and move on. You know, so that's a way to maybe handle it more expeditially expeditiously with the cases where there's there's no controversy about the continuance. And you don't even have to put on. So that's an option. I just kind of have a reservation about taking it totally out of the commission's hands once it's on the docket.
Okay, I I think we can do that. Um, just go ahead and list those cases and say these will be continued. And if anybody has an issue with it, then we'll bring that one back individually. Otherwise, let's 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 do that. So you can help me out on our next, what, the July sixth discussion we have, then let's do that.
Yeah, I can call I can call out, Sarah, would I need to read all the cases into the record or um? Like the clerk doesn't, I don't think she does that for the ones they hold.
She doesn't, no.
So I could just simply rattle off by number, like doc- doc items. One, eight, twelve, fifteen, and seventeen are all proposed to be continued and and then you can take it from there.
Yeah, I mean, I what I'm envisioning, if if the if this is okay, I mean, I'm just, this is just an idea. I'm not saying you have to do it this way. The chairman can can just say, okay, we're gonna. We're going to continue all those cases to the dates as stated on the docket unless there's an objection. And when I say unless there's an objection, I'm talking about an objection from a commissioner. And if there isn't one, you're done.
Sounds good to me.
Think about it. We don't have to decide right now, but you know.
Sure. That sounds great. And then I guess we'll just have to somehow find out if people are in the audience, which uh case they're in the audience for.
Right.
And I imagine you guys have a process for that already. We don't need to.
We we wouldn't necessarily know. It could be someone who just heard from a neighbor that there's going to be something going on and they came down. So I do think especially, I I do think you're going to have to give someone the op- give the audience the opportunity to say whether they. Object or want to speak. Um, just as a courtesy, whether you have to legally is a different thing, but I think as a. Since as Sarah pointed out, they may have taken time off work to come down there.
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of less of an issue, I think, at least in my mind, now that we're meeting virtually. But once we start meeting in person, I you know, I I just, people can get pretty upset, you know, if they've taken the time to come downtown. Uh, taking time off work and, you know.
But well, in most cases on those kind of docket items, I mean, you guys already know.
Right.
That they're that they've got some opposition or something to them, so we ought to hold those out.
Right.
So did I not hear say that we would still be doing the virtual meetings even when you went back to in person?
We will be, but there will still be some people that choose to come. It'll be people's choice to whether they come to City Hall or not. And um there it's very possible there will be some people. Um, would object to that. And we've even had that, not so much with this new commission, but when we first started on Zoom a few months ago, we had a few people. That have testified on continued cases. Actually, I think it was your first meeting.
Yeah.
Had a lot of testimony on a continued case.
That's an example of what I'm talking about. That was the case involving the proposed facility for unaccompanied minor children. Um. You know, the for unaccompanied minor refugee children. That case had just tremendous public interest, more than probably any other case I've seen. And so that's an example of particularly if we didn't meet at City Hall. I mean, you would have had a huge crowd there. Um, uh, that would have wanted the opportunity and they did it virtually to testify about the continuance. So that's what I'm talking about. I don't expect this is going to happen a lot, but.
Yeah, see, I was unclear with that too, because I thought we were of the mindset that we didn't want to try to hear things on a continuance because. Um, we didn't want to materially discuss something if it was being continued. So I kind of thought that this was also. Um, more shoring up the process that we want to have. With the detriment being that you might get some people who don't understand it's for the greater good of our process in that. We're not creating quorum and we're not discussing something that we are ready to discuss.
Right. No, that's true, and it it's kind of a balance, right? I mean, it's it's okay to let people testify about why they they object to the continuance as long as they don't get into the facts of the case. But even in a situation like I'm talking about. Where there's significant public interest, sometimes the commission could say, okay, you know what, so many people are here. We're going to let them testify and we're going to get into the merits. We're not going to decide the case today, but we're going to establish a forum today. And um, you know, again, it's not something we do on a regular basis, but I think there are unique situations where we might do that. And if you have a full, if everybody is there that day and so far with this commission, we we haven't had absences. It's not really a problem if you establish a forum. The only time I'm really concerned about establishing a forum is only four of you show up, right? Well, so you're, so if one of you is absent at the next meeting, we can't hear the case. But if you're all there and one or two of you is absent at the next meeting, we can still go forward and hear the case because we still have a forum. So.
Right. And we do at the sta- at our at our level, we we try to know, you know, in those examples, we would provide a full staff report. Even though the applicant may be requesting continuance so that if you wanted to take testimony. Um, you would have information available to you, but we do our best to do that. Sometimes we don't know. Um, in advance, but if we do know, we'll do that.
Um, another unrelated question before we wrap up. Uh, of things that we advanced to councillor BZA, do you guys have a rough percentage you could give me of how? Um, often our recommendation is either reversed or not heated. And um, can you give me a sense of how those are heard? So clearly, we hear the the case in much greater depth than I imagine council would in most instances. Is it passed as like, is it grouped into a whole lot of items at once or is it proved one at a time?
Um, no, they don't. They would typically, so if like you pass a development plan. Um, that acts as a preliminary plat- and a rezoning, they would typically hear that as one ordinance, one case, one project. Um, so they don't group it with other projects or anything like that. Um, it's pretty rare um that. Um, that they go against a recommendation of yours. It happens, um, but it's not, it's not common. They typically approve whatever you recommend approval of, um, and they typically. Um, it's it's more common, of course, um, I I can think of one case off the top of my head where you, the commissioner approved, recommended approval, they turned it down. Um. I can think of more examples of where you recommend a denial and they approved it, but even that's quite rare. Sarah and Diane.
May adjust a condition or something like that.
That's much more common.
Right, so maybe like if a developer asks you all to make an adjustment to something and you chose not to, but then they get to council and and they choose to go ahead and. Make the. Um, amendment or removal of a condition.
I would be interested to know if patterns arose at any time, just so that way we could realize that maybe we're misinterpreting something. Um, or that we're not in line with what council BZA believes. It just might be useful if there were a pattern to arise to hear about that.
I I think that's something that we can provide, but I always caution that you all worry about um. Where the council's going with something because really your role is to look at this from a planning and development standpoint. And from a commute, you know, kind of um from a more professional standpoint, whereas they're looking, they're doing a lot of political side or. Something more, so always a little cautious. I don't want you all changing your thoughts if you think um requiring. Brick and, you know, more quality materials is important because it's what's better from an aesthetic standpoint. But then they choose to say, no, we don't want to have more brick on it because we think that's too much for the developer. That those are two different things. And so I I think we can still tell you whenever they make adjustments just so that you know. And we we often, or at least I know I used to, I'm sure you do too, Joe, will kind of tell if it's a big project if they decide to do something different, but. We always just want to be careful about what where your role is versus theirs.
I was wondering if we could talk a little more about just. Um, expediting some of the cases and and ways that we could be more efficient. And I think the virtual realm offers a lot of challenges, and I think. One of the challenges I've seen is when we have public testimony. I usually think of public testimony as somebody walks to the front, they say their piece, and then they walk and sit back down. And because people are still sort of in the Zoom universe, there is sort of a dialogue that starts to happen, and I think that lengthens the cases. Um, and then the other point is, there's been a few cases where the applicants have gone pretty long on their presentation. Um, and I don't know if there's any way that we can kind of say you have to stick within this limit. Um, because I think it really makes the, I actually think it helps their case in a lot of ways because if people go too long. We start to lose the the vital information they need to present. So uh, if I I don't know if that is something that we can ask is that they uh specify a certain time. And then also, um, you know, where we could avoid breaks, maybe. Um, maybe the staff presents their presentation and then the applicant presents their presentation. And then we do questions as opposed to trying to get questions in between. So any of those kind of like steps that we could consolidate or um put time limits on, I think that could help over the course of several cases.
That's kind of up to you guys. I think all those are worthy things to consider. That could help.
Right, yeah.
They do have the ability to to limit testimony to a certain number of minutes if you wanted to do that.
Right. Yeah, that's always within your discretion and usually up to the, usually the chairperson kind of. Makes those decisions, um, particularly in cases where there's lots of. Uh, testimony, we've seen uh even. At council, and I think the CPC has done this where we've told people, okay, try to limit your testimony to three minutes. And somebody will actually time people, tell them once they get there. Now, it's hard to do that sometimes because not everybody, not everybody listens, so. You kind of have to remind people and and uh, but anyway, that that's certainly something that you can always do.
And if we want to.
It's always good for the.
Times, then, you know, it's it's just helpful if you all decide as a commission that you think, okay, five minute maximum for the developer. Just so that Joe knows, so his staff can tell people, okay, you're going to get to present, but you're we're going to limit you to five minutes because we have a big docket or whatever. Or if that's just going to be the standard, that's fine, then they can at least forewarn people so that they don't get the cast of thousands. Sitting there and each one of them feels like that they have to say something because they're sitting there.
We've talked about that in the past about having uh a time limit, uh, three minutes, five minutes, whatever it is. But I think in some ways, the planning commission is the opportunity for the public to be able to speak, and so a lot of times you have to let them. You have to hear what they have to say. What I don't want to get into is a lot of repetitive. You know, they say the same thing, person to person to person. Uh, so we try to keep that to to a minimum. And then the other thing is I don't want to get into the public meeting or the between the applicant and the public. They need, that's why they need to have that done prior to coming to our meeting, so trying to limit that as much as we we can. So um, I'm all for short finding ways to shorten these up and certainly we'll allow the. We'll do the staff do their presentation and move right into the applicant, provide theirs, and then go into Q and A by by the commission. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we give plenty of opportunity for the commission to ask their questions. Because we're, you know, fairly new and still learning as we as we go. Uh, but I now that we have a few under our belt, we're going to kind of start cutting a few things out. And then you'll find that once we get in in person, things will happen. Uh, it'll be a lot easier because you can read the body language of, you know, where everybody's at and what's going on, if we have questions or not. Versus virtually, you kind of have to be more descriptive. Uh, because some people are listening and some are not paying attention and all of a sudden. You're at a point where they need to speak and you need to make sure that you say. That, you know, hey, this is your opportunity to speak, so. Uh. I'm looking forward to when we can get back in the person. And Forrestine, I can't wait to finally see see you, so I think you'll be. You'll like it too to be in person as well.
Yes, I uh, I will be glad to meet everyone, but I kind of like this virtual stuff too.
Totally get it. Yeah, the travel time is a lot less and that's for sure.
Sarah, there were a couple of things you wanted to touch on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I actually did want to touch on the on the virtual option moving forward. I think even when we meet in person, there's, we're still going to be providing that option, right? I mean, that's my understanding because there's some people who are not going to be comfortable coming to City Hall, right? Um, some people have health issues or they have family members that have health issues and whatnot, so. I think that what I'm going to propose is that we amend our rules to allow for that. Because what I did when we amended our rules before all of you were appointed. We didn't have the option to meet virtually, and so this was back in March. And so the rule I wrote just allowed us to do this when we're under a state of emergency, which will end in August. I think we need to change it to just allow us to meet virtually. And not have any restrictions on that. That doesn't mean that we won't be meeting in person at City Hall, but you know, some of you may decide you you need to continue to appear via Zoom. We have council members who are still doing that, and members of the public may want to do that as well, so I just think we need to. Keep that flexibility. So I'm going to draft something and to allow us to do that unless anybody has any concerns with that.
I appreciate that because I do have uh my mom that has other health issues, so. I'm trying to stay out of the public as much as possible.
Yeah, and I understand that, and like I said, we have council persons who are who are doing that and probably will continue to do that. And so a- anybody who needs to do that should have that option.
Yeah, I'll speak personally. My childcare resources are also people who have health issues, so I sort of have to keep a certain bubble.
Yeah, I agree totally. Yeah, it's when I drafted that rule, I, you know, I we I was kind of thinking this was going to be temporary, but I I think.
And Diane, for your presentations, we really appreciate it. Very informative. Um, thank you, and I think it'll certainly help us out as we move forward.
So.
Thank you very much.
Actually, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Talk to you later.
All right, bye.
Bye.